So I call this meeting to order. It is 7:15 PM on Tuesday, August 8th, 2017. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have Board members Tim Polis, Pete Tensing, Paula Cole, John Ashmead, Crystal Brockie, and I'm Christine Malik, and we also have Superintendent Unowski. I would like to remind us all of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda. Is any member prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda.
All right, we'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We will move on to the superintendent update, and Mr. Unowski.
All right, so for the first item for us, it's with pride and excitement that we have our yearly introduction of Bill Davis, head of the Spartan Foundation, one of the greatest supporters of our students. They support athletics, they support extracurriculars, but if we just break it down, plain and simple, they support Richfield School students and have done historically. They hold a golf fundraiser every year. They do a lot in partnership to help make sure that our students are able to learn, grow, and excel, and succeed in their futures. And one of the things that they do is provide funds and support directly to students. And so Bill is here to give us an update on some of the work that they've been doing recently and share some great news with us. Mr. Davis?
Where do you want me?
This is a slightly different setup than normal. We'll bring you the mic.
Thank you, and nice to see you all. Good evening. I'm Bill Davis, Richfield grad of 1960, and I'm here in my capacity as president of the Richfield Spartan Foundation with the pleasant task of providing a check to the school district for $25,000 scholarships, which we presented at breakfast on the end of May to the students and their parents. You know, I don't know how much you know about the Richfield Spartan Foundation. We just finished our 28th year. And as Stephen has said, you know, our main fundraiser has always been a golf tournament. And the golf tournament has helped us supplement the athletics and the fine arts at the high school for over 28 years, in addition to funding a scholarship for the Athena and the Spooner Award winners. As time has gone on and people have noticed what we've been doing, we had donors and other foundations step up and make contributions to us, which has allowed us to expand our scholarship area. So working with the scholarship committee at the high school, we identified 23 additional scholarships recipients for this year. And that covers a gamut from what we call the against-all-odds, which are students that have overcome personal barriers, if you will, to have successful high school careers. We have scholarships for the first college entrant from a family. We have top scholars. We have athletic awards, which awards athleticism and leadership. And we even have some scholarships now that are in memory of graduates of Richfield High School. So I have a check here for $25,000, and Steve Cannon says, "I got the money." We hope to be able to do it again next year, and Stephen here has been a good supporter, as Tim has been, to the liaison to our group, and I hope to see you again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would also add that Crystal and I were privileged enough to join the breakfast this past year because Tim had a previous engagement. It was really a great experience and really neat to see what you did for all of those kids and the enthusiasm of the people there, but also the parents and all of the students. It was a wonderful experience.
So then, just to summarize again, Richfield Spartan Foundation, providing that direct support to students and almost in the range of a half a million dollars of scholarships to support their futures. And so it's an amazing partnership. We talked in our study session about partnership between our community and between our school system. The Spartan Foundation is one of those great examples of supports directly to students and really directly to support their futures. So that's pretty exciting for all of us and for our students. Second item on the agenda, the board had requested an update in regard to equity work within Richfield Public Schools. Just sort of a brief look back at some of the work we did last year, so sort of that summary once again, and we've talked about most of these things, but just sort of packaging them together. And then also a look ahead to what are some of those big steps we will be doing in the next year. And so the two main, we'll call them large equity-based activities, and equity is a very unique situation. It's one of those things that we had a conversation about, what is equity? Because it's very challenging to define, and it means different things to different people. And I think as we look at it in Richfield Public Schools and you look at our strategic plan, talking about high levels of achievement for all students, and we use all capital letters in regard to ALL, and we're really looking at providing an environment where all belong. We're looking at having outcomes and opportunities for our students that have no predictability, that you can't look at the race, socioeconomic background, gender, or any other area in relation to the students. And if we are successful in providing equity, our outcomes and our student outcomes have no predictable pattern based on race. That's what we're shooting for with our strategic plan, that's what we're shooting for in our work, and some of the specific actions we have taken over the past set of years have taken us that direction. One of the additional unique components of equity work is I found that if you don't label certain things equity work, sometimes people don't quite realize what's happening. So for example, you know, the state provides ELL funding, and in the past several years ago, RDLS didn't receive ELL teachers. And our board identified that as something that was actually within the state funding formula and something that we should do to provide equity to all of our students. And so we made sure that that funding realignment occurred. We looked at our gifted and talented identification and found that some of our practices weren't equitable, and we've revised and totally revitalized some of those practices. And we looked at some of the methods by which students get into college-bearing classes and advanced placement classes, and we found that those weren't actually leading to equitable outcomes. And we've completely overhauled those and are seeing some pretty accelerated results in both our gifted services and in regard to our college credit classes. Now, we've also really done some additional pieces that have accelerated opportunities for kids. So we applied district-wide for an ADSIS grant. And ADSIS provides additional supports for reading and math for students to accelerate them to grade level and ensure that all of our students who aren't quite at the level we'd like them to be have additional supports. Each of the past two years and for the next two years will be receiving $900,000 to provide those supports to our students, and not every district participates in some of that work. And additionally, voluntary pre-K. Obviously, last year, you all know that we were able to launch voluntary pre-K. We received that information in August, and it was one of the most aggressive launching districts. We found an incredible number of students to enroll in voluntary pre-K because one of the ways to truly provide equitable outcomes is really early intervention and starting at three and starting at four. Proud to announce that in the last week, and this is also new news to the board, the one school that we had not had funded, RDLS, received 20 seats in the voluntary pre-K funding from the state. So now all of our students are voluntary pre-K funded, and we have an additional two seats funded at our other schools for a total of 28 additional seats in voluntary pre-K. So it's just really exciting, and some of that strategic planning vision of providing equity, which is early intervention will support our students in getting to those places where outcomes can't be predicted by some of the ways that our data have been showing in the past. Similarly, some of the other ways is direct programming to our students, to our staff, and direct action and engagement in relation to equity. As a district, we have been working, and we started last year, working with the team at Innocent Classroom. We began with an introduction of Innocent Classroom. One of the founders, Alex Pate, is the author of Amistad, and he's also a professor at the University of Minnesota. With our beginning of our school year, we had six one-session breakout trainings, which actually led to two five-session cohort teacher trainings. Additionally, all of our leaders and the entire management team across the district participated in four-session leadership training throughout the course of the year. And so the goal with that is to build our capacity with regard to Innocent Classroom and then begin to expand our practices and begin to take that to scale with relation to our students. And I'll talk a little bit more in depth about what Innocent Classroom provides as we continue to move on. The other thing we partnered with was Reimagine Minnesota. It's something we had staff participate in, leadership, and also our students. Reimagine Minnesota was an action across the entire state, including 40 superintendents and districts, beginning to talk about what would school districts look like and what would education look like in the state of Minnesota if truly equitable actions were occurring and equitable outcomes occurred. Students were brought together, over 300 students in a conference, and we talked about that previously at a board meeting. But we're going to remind ourselves of some of that work and also take a look to the work ahead, because what happens when you begin engaging with work like a launch of Innocent Classroom, it is, where do you go next, and how will you make sure that this is sustainable with your entire staff? And then with Reimagine Minnesota, yes, we partnered it as a large group, now how do we individualize the work to Richfield Public Schools? So Innocent Classroom is really about transforming classrooms and relationships and deepening relationships between staff and students, particularly our students of color, increasing equity throughout the district. And the focus of Innocent Classroom is to look at what they call the student's good, or what is it that is driving that student, the reason they make all the decisions and do all the things that they do? How do we overcome for that student, and how do we help them to overcome societal negative stereotypes, low expectations, and bias? And how do we make sure that we provide an environment that's safe for learning and where all students are free to achieve? And one of the questions a couple of the board members asked me was, how is this different from other equity trainings, and how does this work exactly? And I think, you know, I was trained initially, I got my bachelor's in child psychology, and then I was a counseling psychology master's degree, and there are really two methodologies by which psychology occurs. One has to do with you transform a person's behavior, which ultimately transfers the way they think. So if you change the behavior of a person, their thinking will follow. The other methodology is exactly the opposite. You change a person's thoughts, and ultimately, the behavior will follow. There isn't a right answer, however, there are significant arguments about which is the best way. We've engaged in both. We've done work through WMEP and Pacific Education Group, and most of our staff have been trained in Beyond Diversity, and that begins by working on people's thoughts and their mindsets, and how do you change their mindset? Innocent Classroom has us beginning a little bit with mindset, but really is about engaging the student and changing the behavior of the staff to create that welcoming environment in a different way. And so while they're both going to the same ends, we're looking at sort of different psychological backgrounds as we move towards those. So just for a little bit more background, we'll see if the Innocent Classroom video plays. Or not.
That would be a no.
All right, and if it doesn't, we'll just move on.
Send it to us.
All right, we'll send it to you. It's actually, yes, I have the link to the YouTube in the board pack.
Oh, that's true.
And we actually tried to embed it in the video. So what you'll hear is Alex Pate and some educators who have partnered in Innocent Classroom sort of talking about the experience. Again, I think we've seen these as a board, but it was just a reminder of how this can help transform classrooms and help transform that base relationship. The other thing we've been working on is Reimagine Minnesota. And this is, to me, this is some pretty exciting work. I was at the back-to-school conference just today with some of the educators participating in that. One of the leaders, Dr. Joe Gothard, the new superintendent of St. Paul Public Schools, was helping to take a leadership role, and we've really partnered on looking at what does it look like to truly provide equitable education and really engage students' voice so we can hear what does it look like, not from our perspective as adults, but what does it look like from the perspective of students? So what Reimagine Minnesota is doing is it's really trying to encourage that student and family voice, particularly from underrepresented students. The next step in the process, and what we've talked about in the past, is we've partnered in some community events, we've gathered significant feedback, you have a large number of the pieces that we're looking at within the board packet, but really, what does equity look like if we were to provide it? How do we break down barriers? How do we ensure that there is truly the opportunity we want to provide, and that the words of the adults translate into the actions for our students? That plan is actually going to be presented, or the draft plan, at AMSD, actually on Friday. I believe Dr. Tensing and I will be there. To hear sort of that first draft or that first feedback, you have some of the rough draft work in our board packet. The ideal outcome goal is a collective action plan across the entire state, to talk about equitable funding, to talk about equitable services, to talk about equitable training, and not just have it happen in isolation in one district, but have it happen across all districts within state of Minnesota through legislative action and through collective agreement. We'll see if this one works.
We're testing Mary's skills.
I don't think it's you, Mary.
All right, so our video, again, my video is not obviously as powerful. If it's not working, if it doesn't click when you click the arrow, it's not going to work. So you can go, oh, look at you.
Clicked the arrow right.
She got it.
She's so proud of herself.
Is there volume? So what you're seeing is a set of facilitators who have worked with, there's over 300 students. We participated in our, oops.
Sorry.
That's all right. Basically, we participated with a set of students from our high school in this same conference with over 300 students, which provided their ideas, their thoughts. You'll hear students say, not only are they gathering us to ask questions, but they're not giving us the questions. They're letting us ask to talk about what are those most important pieces. This video was put together by obviously a group in Okeahnepon who has a larger video budget than us. I actually told Superintendent Law we'd be showing his video at our board meeting today, and he chuckled quite a bit. Why don't we just stop with the video, and we'll just keep moving?
If we told him how it went, he'd still be chuckling.
That's right. That's right.
And actually, I think it was you and I.
Yes.
Who were there, along with some of our staff members. I don't know if any students were at that first meeting that we attended that was in Minneapolis.
Right, that was the community meeting in Minneapolis.
But it was exciting just to hear the foundation being laid for the student work. I was very excited about that.
Not to put you on the spot, do you want to give 30 seconds on what that was like in Minneapolis?
So that, you know, as you said, that space was not specifically designed for students, and one of the things that I appreciate is that they are very intentionally creating spaces for students to come together and talk about what are the problems and what are the solutions that we need. But at that one, it was still this open space concept, and it was focused on, you know, people from a number of different communities, because it was our district in Minneapolis and maybe one or two others that were all part of the same meeting, talking about the educational system that we want, and what do we think all of our students deserve? And so sort of starting from that place of what it should be, instead of starting from the place of what do we have now? And so it's exciting to think about, I would say, the leadership opportunity that exists for our students and really figuring out how to move this forward for us in Richfield.
Yeah, I think the most powerful impact is to decentralize. I mean, obviously, superintendent, school board, we have a very large say on what happens in schools, and the goal is to decentralize power from us and really empower students and families, particularly those that don't typically have as much voice as we would like them to have in the school systems, and really hear what the experience is like and tell us, rather than us decide for them, what it would look like if we were to transform. So it has the potential to be a very powerful piece, and we're looking at what to do next with that related to Richfield, and I'm going to talk about that in just a second. Innocent Classroom next steps, and we'll be providing a mid-course update over the course of this year, but we're taking the next steps with Innocent Classroom. So what we found across our first cohorts is that it was highly valued, much appreciated, and we have a large number of staff who are excited and looking to sign up and take those next steps in regard to training. We also identified barriers. We actually offered it on a Friday afternoon, which isn't always the favorite time of educators, but we had a full house on all of our training sessions. And so we're looking at ongoing leadership training, planning, and coaching. And so we already had our first training session with the entire leadership and management team, and we'll have a set of ongoing leadership management trainings for our organizational leadership. And then we can also engage in a conversation about a board study session, or if we want to have a conversation at the board about what would that look like to do some of that training and that work as a school board. We're looking at training for up to half of the licensed staff, and so we're going to be rolling out the next steps on the 29th at our Welcome Back. The second half of the day is sort of intro PD sessions, and people sign up for their learning academies and their professional development over the course of the year. We've currently set up structures to support half of our staff, half our licensed staff, to be trained in Innocent Classroom with the goal of having the entire staff trained by the end of the next school year in 1819. So we'd have full capacity in our initial training by the end of 19. We're also looking at beginning training for non-licensed staff. What does it look like to train our bus drivers, our custodians? Basically, looking at every person who interacts with our students and who's the face of our district, and really beginning to look at how do we create that environment from the first moment they step on one of our buses, to the first moment they walk into one of our buildings, to when they're in our classrooms. And then really looking at creating and implementing systems of support for individual schools. So we have one school that has decided they are ready at capacity to make this one of their professional developments for the course of the year. And so Sheridan Hills is looking at what would it look like to have all of our staff trained this year, and then using themselves as a model for perhaps other schools following later on in the year or following next year. So as opposed to heterogeneous teacher cohorts from across the district and entire school staff sharing that, having that shared experience as one school, and so we're going to be comparing those experiences to see what's valued more, to do it within your own staff or to do that sort of cross-pollinating across staffs. So summarizing, about half of our staff, moving into non-licensed staff, and then also doing ongoing leadership training to continue to move our management team and leadership team forward. And then Reimagine Minnesota. It's a great thing to send nine to 12 students off to a conference and have them come back feeling empowered and excited in a small group of staff, but we really need to figure out how do we utilize the rare opportunity to engage student voice and really have them help transform our schools and transform our organization. So we're going to continue engaging in the statewide efforts. Like I said, at AMSD, that next conversation is happening on Friday, and we'll continue to move and be one of those partners and one of those strong voices in regard to the statewide plan of what would it look like to provide equity across the state, but also, as you know, we're very concerned about what happens within Richfield Public Schools. So similarly, at the district launch, and as we look at our district launch on the 29th, where our teachers come back, and our overall theme is going to be excel, obviously, we'll be having a conversation about referendum and referendum communication, but our main instructional focus will be around equity through Innocent Classroom and through also around Reimagine Minnesota. And so Paula Forbes has been one of the leaders in Reimagine Minnesota and has a team who have helped facilitate and create that open space, and she's been very successful in engaging students and engaging families in conversation. So her team is going to be coming in, and they're going to partner with us at the launch, and then we're going to begin working shortly after that, they're going to have an introductory meeting conversation with the staff at the high school. One of the reasons you bring people in from the outside at times is they know how to do things in a way that you might not do them. One of the things she insisted in the initial conversation is, well, you'll be bringing students, correct? And of course, I hadn't thought of that, right? Now, of course, I think now, and I go, wow, that was pretty obvious. If we're going to engage student voice, they should be in the planning. And so our team is now setting up that first staff and student planning for our high school students, high school staff, but then we're also inviting some, a couple, from each of our buildings to look at what would it then take to moving some of that conversation to our other buildings. And so then, the team from Reimagine Minnesota and Paula's team will be helping engage our high school team and our high school students in creating that space for all of our students to increase their voice and for us to really be able to hear what are the things we could be doing more effectively, which is what happens when we don't even ask the questions, we allow them to formulate the questions and also formulate the answers. So I'm pretty excited about this opportunity, and pretty excited to be partnering with Reimagine and with Paula. She said we are the first district to have taken this next step and launched. There are other districts that have other unique things. She mentioned Columbia Heights is doing a joint collaborative city and school district conversation about partnership, and how do we do this, not just as a district, but as a city, which really pairs well sort of with some of the conversation we had with the city council. So one of the additional benefits we get by bringing in people from time to time is ideas we may not think of ourselves that then sort of go, oh, that was a pretty good idea, wish I had thought of that. We can obviously add those. We'll then continue on with the conversations at our high school, and we'll increase student voice, and again, I can't fully define where it's going to go because our students are going to be doing that work for that outcome of equity through increasing student voice and really hearing how to transform our organization. Questions from members of our team?
I have, I'm going to ask a question first about Innocent Classroom. When you talk about developing an expertise and sort of training our staff, sometimes that training can be delivered by an external source. Sometimes you develop capacity to do that work internally. With the Innocent Classroom model, is this sort of an external source, or are we working on developing our own internal capacity?
So one of the conversations we have with every single person who comes in, the first thing they hear is, at the end of this product, we tell them exactly what we're looking for, and then we say, at the end of your work with us, we want it to be sustainable from ourselves. And so the expectation we have for Innocent Classroom, the expectation that we have with our work with Reimagine Minnesota, the expectation of all those pieces are, when this is done, when we're done, we need to be able to continue to train ourselves, we need to be prepared to make it sustainable, and not need to bring people in from the outside. And so we've already engaged the team at Innocent Classroom about what would that look like at the end of 19 if we do an initial training for staff? How do we create, train-the-trainer model? How do we create sustainable model within Richfield so it can be something that you don't continue on indefinitely with somebody that you brought in?
And then, my second question, one of the pieces of information which is part of the board packet is some very extensive sort of qualitative gathering, I think they call it harvesting of ideas and thoughts from the reimagined process. And so I'm anticipating that we will then be getting, as the outcome of our own efforts, we will be getting our own sort of Richfield-specific harvesting of that voice, because I'm sure that a big part of the challenge here is to effectively curate all of the voices that you're hearing so that a message can be sort of gathered in a coherent fashion that...
So I can give you a definite maybe as your answer.
Yeah.
So while in our minds, we think people come together for open space, you gather that, you organize it structurally, and then you come up with a plan that becomes specific, which is where Reimagine is going, that may not be where Richfield's going, because that may not be what's defined by our students and by our staff as the next steps for this organization.
Got it.
To serve equity. If it follows the statewide plan, which again, works with my mind, I think, there was a large amount of open spaces, there were communities across the entire metro that shared voice that was harvested, that was analyzed for data, that is coming together for a plan, that plan will be shared out, and then whatever the next step of collective commitments, we'll move things forward. Now we take that to the local level, and that becomes the conversation at our high school. It could be that it becomes the high school, and our high school becomes mentors for our middle school and for our elementary school, and then we engage all of our students in voice, and what does that look like? But it's hard to predict where it's going to go when you give up the power.
Sure.
When you put the voice into the hands of the others, who will then give voice to what does it look like? And then it becomes upon us, what do we do with that information, and how do we then utilize that?
Right.
Together with the students and the staff and the community.
Right. So, all right, so keep an open mind, it sounds like, and I think we'll be very, very curious to see where, how we're directed as this moves forward. I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Just a comment and a quick question. I really appreciated you talking about some of the psychology and that there is not sort of one right approach, and actually, I think the important thing in that is that it's different for different people, based on how different people learn and how different people experience things. And so even though we are putting a lot of our organizational efforts into Innocent Classroom, and I'm very excited to have half of our licensed staff by the end of this year, and hopefully, the other half by the end of next year, there are still opportunities for people to participate in Beyond Diversity, for example. So can you talk about what that looks like for people for whom they realize, actually, I maybe need more of the Beyond Diversity type approach, or I need both and want both?
Yes, so when we pulled out of WMEP, we actually engaged in WMEP à la carte, which basically means, as opposed to paying a sum of money and whoever wants to go goes for free, we now pay by the staff member. Many, if not most, of our new staff members actually went to the WMEP training and went to Beyond Diversity through WMEP, which is where HEDAG somewhat stopped. And it's interesting, because Beyond Diversity is just sort of the first step in the Pacific Education Group work, and so we do have staff, we're continuing on with that work and continue to go forward, but we are able to and encourage people to participate... participate in WMEP offerings. That's actually funded through both district professional development and through our QCOM funds. And we do have people who definitely engage and continue on, and many, if not most, of our new staff have engaged in that. And it had been something expected of all previously. And one of the things that is also an argument about where do you go, is do you force training upon people, or do you not? Another of those things that's not, not a correct answer. In an ideal world, if we engage in a training, you know, as we think about innocent classroom, their model is built on people want to take the training. And so we will come to a certain point where we'll have to know, what do we do then when everybody who is excited, volunteered, the voice is continued, and have we hit a critical mass? What happens if people don't go? And we'll sort of have to reflect on that, and where do we stand? It's hard, because I don't think if you force somebody to go to a training, you're going to get the best implementation, you get the best model. But what I generally believe as an organization is if we, as a board, and as a superintendent, and as a leadership team, and as a staff, and as a community, if we are very clear with what is our mission, what is our vision, how do we do things as Richfield Schools, part of how people then choose is they understand where we are, where our values are, and what we believe in. And to be part of this organization, people who are employed here choose in, and they choose to be part of that work. So for us to be very clear that we're an equity-based board, we're an equity-based district, we're going to serve all students, people who are working here are very clear that that's, that's the work of our organization, and that's the work of our team. Anything else?
Referendum update.
All right, referendum update. So at the last meeting, we had a conversation around referendum, and putting things on the ballot. And you approved working towards ballot language. We have our consultants back to answer questions. And so we won't vote on the ballot language now, but our goal is to answer any questions and walk through any of the pieces that might be sitting there in our minds today. And so we're looking at asking our taxpayers to reinvest in Richfield as we inspire and empower our, our students to learn, grow, and excel. Couple of things, because we always want to kick things off with some highlights and some of the exciting things of our district. So obviously, our graduation rate, which took a very large jump, the second highest in the metro last year, is higher than the state average. Over the past two years, our high school students are achieving some of the best reading and math growth of any high school in the entire state of Minnesota. And then, as I talked about with the city council study session, we have been very aggressive in pursuing grant funding, early childhood classrooms. So now with the Pathway Two, with the voluntary pre-K, totaling up the ads to supports in math and reading, we're looking at between $2.5 and $3 million that had not been in our organization, that's here yearly to serve our students, and provide some of those equitable opportunities for all of our kids. And then also excited to say that we have that health center that I shared with the city council, birth to 21, free check, or free health services for, for all citizens of the city of Richfield. And so that's an exciting opportunity. Background operational, so an operating levy, our current level, and we've been continuing to find new updates and new pieces of information as we lay things out. If we, there's, one of the complexities I've learned of operating levies is you can look at it in two ways. There's the board authorized amount, and there is the voter authorized amount. If we looked at voter authorized levy for operations, we're between $450 and $1,100 behind our neighboring districts. Partially due to that, partially due to funding from the state not matching inflation. And as I shared at the study session, we are $600 per student behind where we would be if over the last 10 years, funding had actually matched inflation. So that's around $2.5 million we would have more to serve our students had funding matched inflation. And so looking at that, we really worked with FPAC to take a look at what are the good, what are the good things to look at from a financial perspective. And we also took a community survey about what are some of the things that our community values, and how do we take those next steps? It's also important to understand, how are, how are the funds used from an operating referendum? And they're, they're used for direct support to students and long-term financial stability. We use them for licensed classroom teachers. The goal of our funds is to maintain or reduce class size, and continue to focus on providing effective tier-one classroom instruction to our students. We've used them for additional licensed teachers for quality differentiated support in reading and math. We offer expanded course offerings at middle and high school, including high school courses earning college credits. And as we talked about earlier, we've really expanded opportunity for our students and students of color earning college credits. And then really supporting the long-term financial stability and limiting the impact of possible future reductions, as ongoing state funding doesn't necessarily match inflation. So, we recently updated these as we looked and narrowed pieces down, and so this might be slightly different than the board pack. This is voter authorized referendum funds of some of our neighboring districts. And so these are the funds we directly asked the voters for. Right now, Richfield is authorized for $964.60, but we rounded that one off. Edina receives $14.12 per student, Bloomington $14.72, Hopkins 2011, and St. Louis Park 2032. And so there is, again, there's an additional board authorized amount of up to around $400 per district, of which each of the districts access. And so one of the complexities is understanding what is accessed by the board, and what is accessed through support from voters. And so as we look, right now, while we have an amazing and supportive community to our students, we also find that, right now, our funding is significantly shorter, or significantly reduced when compared to many of our surrounding neighborhood districts. So, we're looking at currently overall receiving $13.28 per pupil, including that board authorized, but a proposed revoke of that $964 levy. And as a reminder, we use that, and we also had an inflationary increase built into that, that would also revoke that inflationary increase. What the state found is that having an inflationary increase was quite complex. Not naming it as a dollar amount of $15, $20 per month, per year, but saying at up to 2% capped at $15 became complex for the state to, to authorize.
If I can interrupt, I think it was the cap that was the issue. The state gives an uncapped potential inflation increase year over year. And so their, their formula would just say, for those who have the inflation adjustment, here it is, here's your money. But ours was capped, so then money would come into the district, the district would have to go, it just, would have to make, make sure it was capped properly, and then send, send the excess funds back. And no one was really excited to go through that longer.
So if, so we'll be proposing a $450 per student operating referendum. Looking at that impact, and we found that the average Richfield home is $210,000 at this point. That impact would be $7.67 monthly on, on a $210,000 home in Richfield. The second component, and the second question we'll be asking through our referendum, is a capital referendum. It's important to note that Richfield buildings and the Richfield community made a significant investment in our students and in our city in the 50s and 60s when our buildings were built. And there actually has not been a voter-approved capital investment since 1995. And so we haven't sold bonds, and we haven't had a significant reinvestment beyond that amount that is board-approved. And so our buildings are in need of pretty significant deferred maintenance updates to renew that investment of the Richfield community from the past. We also, as we continue to move forward, need safety and security improvements for our students and for our staff. School board authority only authorizes a certain amount of funding for a specific type of air quality or safety projects. So it's very restricted what you all can approve. And so we're required to go directly to the taxpayers for any improvements outside of certain areas in HVAC, or heating, or certain pipe areas, some of those infrastructure pieces in that background. But it definitely doesn't allow finishes such as flooring, or large building components, roofs, or other types of things that are definitely needed over the course of years. Our school board authority includes $32.5 million over the next period of time, and that authority is needed. It's been used in the past. And as we've discussed as a board, we'll continue to move forward with that in the future. So, given that we've had, not had that capital bond referendum, and as we talked about, there was almost $190 million in improvements I identified through work of our community and work of a large group of representative folk, that got reduced down to 165, down to 120, and then really being conservative with funds, looking at $86.8 million as a request of our taxpayers. When you add that together with the $32.5 million of board authority, that increase of the 86.8 will, will increase $13.58 monthly on a $210,000 home. And then the board authorized, when you combine them together, is $15.41 monthly. The reason for that $15.41, it's about a dollar or 75. There's a revocation, or you would revoke $2.75 that's currently utilized, and reissue it at $4.83, totaling that amount of money. So, later on in the agenda, you're going to be asked two specific ballot questions, and this will be the time to get some of those dollar questions, facility-based answers. We'll be asking the members of the Richfield community to increase the existing levy by $450 a student. That would repeal and revoke the current $964.60 levy and replace it with $14.1460. And also say on the ballot that this would increase property taxes, and would provide vital funding to support our students and our teachers. And then question two, creating a capital bond referendum. So it would authorize our organization to sell bonds over 25 years, to complete deferred maintenance improvements to our buildings and grounds. As we talked about, one of the ways we show we truly value our students and want to provide them the best possible educational opportunity is by providing them an environment and a building that is as effective for learning as humanly possible. We'd be increasing and improving safety, security, and traffic flow. We'd also be looking at improvements in educational space, science labs, and common areas to improve our student learning. And that specific question would increase property taxes on an average Richfield home, $210,000 of $13.58 per month. Given the board guidance, which was, we really want to be conservative and really focused on spending taxpayers' money extremely wisely, we looked at trying to keep that as, as low as possible, ending up with a total impact when you look at operating levy, capital levy, and then also board authorized of $23.08 per month on that $210,000 home. With that, are there questions?
The, I don't know if you want to talk specifics on the ballot language. Is, is it, I know, my recollection is that the term on the bond issuance, the 25-year term on the bond issuance is not necessarily part of the ballot language. Is that something that we could put in there?
Do I have to look to my help? Mr.?
Yeah, normally, normally on the bond issue, the, on the question, they don't state the number of years. You have the flexibility to adjust that. Sometimes, if the bond market changes, and interest rates go down, maybe you want to shorten up, and still keep them in your tax impact. If the market goes the other way, you can legally go on as far as 30 years. So normally, that's not on the question. On the operating referendum, you have to state the number of years you've been at the ballot. You know, if you're from one to 10. On the bond issue, they generally do not state the number of years for the bond. I mean, it's, it's in your, it's in all the literature you're going to propose, and the way we calculate the tax impact and all that.
Yeah.
It's not specifically on the ballot.
On the ballot. So there, so there's, I mean, I think, from a voter education perspective, you know, that's, that's a piece for us to address, to kind of make sure that there's clarity that this $86 million obligation is not one that we will be repaying over short term, but we'd be repaying that obligation over a extended term, so.
Right. So there's obviously ballot language, and there's clear communication. We want to, and the board's been very clear guiding that not only will we be clear about things like 25 years in terms of bonding, but we'll also be clear that there is an amount of board authorized for things like HVAC. And the board's been very clear that they want to be extremely transparent with the taxpayers, and we're making sure that that's in all of our communications, that there is an operating question, there's a capital question, but then there's also board authorized funds that we do need to use to make sure that things like our air quality is most effective for our students.
Just to follow on Peter's question and what we, we heard about the, the bond. So with the bond issuance, the, the actual interest rate is not yet determined. That's determined by the market, is that correct?
Correct. What will happen, if the bond issue passes, we'll put together, you'll adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds, and we'll put together an official statement or document to expand like a prospectus that goes out. And about a month later, on that date, we'll take, it's a, it's a competitive bid process.
So, so it's theoretically possible for the actual cost to be slightly lower, slightly higher than what is within this?
Yeah. When we, when we develop the numbers that we're using for the tax impact, we kind of look at where the market is now, realizing that you're not going to be selling those bonds till probably January, or something like that. So we put some kind of cushion in those.
Yep.
Generally try, the, the fine point is trying to make sure you don't understate, you know, overstate or understate by too much.
Understate.
Thanks.
My reaction, the first question I thought was very clear and very straightforward. I think I struggled a little bit more with the second one, because of how many different things are listed as falling under the umbrella of deferred maintenance. And I think my, my overarching reaction is, one, I think deferred maintenance is not a particularly intuitive term. And I actually think it, it kind of implies that it's things that maybe the district should have been doing all along, but was not doing. And I don't think that's necessarily an accurate representation of what has taken place. It's just, these are projects that, when they arise, they arise at a dollar amount that a district is not able to plan for within our existing funding. So there's just something in the language there that I think is tricky, and probably something for the CQC to really help us think through how to communicate. I think the second thing is, I was, I was really surprised that the issue of student and staff, staff safety was not clearer in that second question, because I feel like that was one of the things that came up very strongly as being an area of interest and of need. And as I, I read through this question a couple of times, and I never really saw that in here. And so that was something that I was concerned about.
It was one we heard before. It's like, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, Crystal, are you talking about the, the proposed ballot language?
Yes, I am.
Deeper in the, in the packet?
Yep.
Page 135.
Thank you. I mean, it does say at the end, construction or renovations to all facilities to provide secure entry, vestibules, and, or systems, and to provide ADA access.
Where do you see that?
It's the last line of the question, too, but...
I don't think that necessarily would come across as safety.
Right.
And I'm, I mean, since you said it, I'm a little bit worried about ADA as an acronym, because I, I don't necessarily know that that's common knowledge, that the Americans with Disabilities Act is what that stands for.
So, we can certainly take this feedback back to the attorney for suggestions or recommendations that way. The actual resolution, including the special election, will occur on August 21st. This will even, yes, it might be back to play that conversation.
Is it necessary within the language to list all of the proposed improvements? Because it, it just ends up being a massive list, and, I mean...
It's kind of a fine tuning, in talking with colleagues as the attorney will work on this, and when working with ICSC as well, we want it to be informative, and more convenient in our local community, too, as part of that process, and to make sure it's inclusive of that.
Sure.
But, you know, there are sometimes a little list, here's each improvement, each ability, so we try to narrow it down to as clear as possible.
Okay.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think you're probably hearing some feedback. So a couple of questions of clarification. Clarity, yeah, clarity with the language. And again, Mr. Holgi pointed out that we are able to take specific action on the actual ballot itself on the 21st, when we also authorize fully the special session. The reason for that is, what's that? I'm special election, yes. Because we'll have the entire ballot to approve the special election for the 21st, and so we'll be ready to do that. And that is right before the deadline. And so we could do some refinements to this ballot, if the board is making those suggestions. I'm hearing, being more clear and increasing safety and security within our buildings, perhaps spelling out ADA access, and then also reviewing, I'm reviewing some of the pieces in there to make sure we have as comprehensive a picture as we can without being overwhelming.
I, I had some questions on the, on the operating one. You had a slide with the, the direct support for students and long-term financial stability. And so, you know, we list licensed classroom teachers, additional licensed classroom teachers to maintain or reduce class size, you know, additional teachers or staff for qualified differentiated support, expanded course offerings, and then long-term financial stability. So looping, you know, tying them all together, as well as with sort of one of the, one of the premises that state funding doesn't keep up with inflation, I just, just want to be clear that we'll be judicious with the additional staff to manage class size. For example, we'll be, you know, we, we had a couple buildings that had, and it was really only a couple buildings, but it was, it was a noticeable difference in class size. We would say target them first, I mean...
Yes, absolutely. So we had a couple areas where our class sizes were larger than board-identified goals. We don't have exact barriers, because obviously, our finances don't allow us to do that. And so that would provide that additional flexibility to support added teachers in those areas. Alongside of that, we're also trying to look at ways to be more creative with our funds. And so we actually do have, and we had had multi-age classrooms in the past in Richfield. We actually have one- We actually have, one of our classrooms at RDLS is currently set up to be a one, two multi-age classroom. And one of the ways that a small district is really tied into class size scenarios that don't necessarily work for our students is if we only have a certain number of teachers at each grade level, we either have to add a full new teacher or go with some very awkward numbers. And so providing that multi-age classroom opportunities, and we're really putting in some support, some oversight, and sort of tracking, how do we make sure we're implementing this well at RDLS? This is going to provide us some more flexibility and provide that equitable opportunity for class sizes for students across our district.
And I guess one of the things I'm, I'm trying to get at is knowing that, that the funding, you know, we're revoking the, the inflation protection, and we know that the state funding does not have inflation protection, or at least doesn't keep up with it. Presumably, some of this would be held over, you know, for the first year of the, of the 10-year increase, we would, I, I would like to think, plan to have an excess of funds so that as, as we get into the later in the 10 years, when inflation has eroded the benefit that we're, you know, it would, it would actually provide the stability we're seeking instead of us compelled to make reductions just in saying, darn inflation, when we know it's going to happen and we know our funding isn't going to respond, so.
Right. So one of the areas of board guidance, obviously, is the board approves our budget on a yearly basis. I'll be completely transparent, which is I want to spend our money as much as humanly possible on our students. I also recognize that putting a little away for long-term financial stability is important. And so board guidance to say, let's make sure we retain some of those additional funds to guide against inflation would be one of those pieces, obviously, I would listen to. And so it's something I would ask board members to reflect on because if this is passed in terms of an operating levy, we'll have funds and determine, are we going to use all of those? Are we going to look at doing a slow increase of our fund balance? Are we going to make sure that we do target some of those protections against inflation? As a school principal, I was, with a similar enrollment on a yearly basis, we were always having the conversation of which staff member would be reduced on a yearly basis because we'd lose around one FTE, one teacher per year, just because the difference in cost of implementing education versus inflation was about, at the school that I had, was about a teacher per year, and it was about a 385 student elementary school. And so we were always working through those conversations, so it is important, and I absolutely acknowledge Mr. Paulus, that we do need to look at ways to hold some funds back and to make sure that we're just not in that situation on a year after year basis. Other questions about this component? So what I'm hearing is we won't be pushing forward ballot language. Mr. Holgi will be going back with our attorney.
We'll, we'll get to it when we get to it, I suppose, the ballot language.
I actually do have another, I mean, it's related to ballot language, but I feel like we're talking about it. Is it possible to have languages other than English on ballots in Minnesota? Would it be possible for us to have Spanish, for example, available on these ballots?
Okay, Mr. Holgi, I'm going to come with the, I don't think we have that answer at the moment, but I guarantee you we'll have it by the 21st. And obviously, as you know, if we were able to provide, and we would be more than willing and happy to do the translation and support, we'd be more than happy to have ballots in multiple languages if that is available.
Yeah. I'm sure there's something at the Secretary of State about, about the, the offering of a ballot and who has to approve it. It's just a guess.
Thank you.
Good. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion of the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So we will move on to old business. We'll be reviewing some policies that we looked at at our last meeting, starting with policy 620, credit for learning, and 621.1 administrative guidelines.
All right. So we did a read review of our 620 and 621.1. I believe there were a couple of questions that I received. Students transferring into our high school receive credit in the same way as their school has identified it, so we don't unweight those credits. We also have equal weighting for PSEO, AP, and college and the schools classes, and I believe those are weighted at 1.2 in terms of GPA. And so all those are, are equitably weighted, and I believe that happened about five years ago within our guidelines.
Thank you.
That, that's, that's waiting for GPA purposes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I remember that being an issue. It was probably five years ago, and so I wanted to know if that was current, current practice.
Three and a half years.
Yeah, I didn't think it was five years ago, but.
Right. And then, as you, right. And then, as you noted, there was a lot of pieces within there that weren't actual practice. Those were kept in as track changes in the last board piece. We did remove those and obviously clean those up for tonight's meeting.
So I have a question on the policy. One thing that I was not seeing that I was curious about is any mechanism for appeal on a decision. Let's, let's hypothetically say that a decision is made not to recognize a particular experience as being a credit-bearing experience. Would there be any mechanism for reconsideration, I guess? We don't have it in policy, it looks like.
Right, we don't. I'm not sure how that would work. So a student who has a credit, transfers it in, and it is a credit, according to our policy. If they didn't receive credit.
Well, I guess that what I'm, what I'm particularly thinking about is one of the pieces that is in the policy, I feel like it's fairly straightforward if the credit is granted by another Minnesota school district or, you know, a school district from another state. But we do have in our policy that credit may be granted for experiences that are less sort of rigorously defined. They talk about work-based learning, other educational activities and opportunities, out-of-school experiences with community organizations. So scenarios where it feels like the definition of, of the experience may not have a perfect alignment with our curriculum. So where it, it feels like there may be a subjective determination being made on whether a particular opportunity would be credit-bearing or not. Would you, all right, so. So what, where I'm looking is I'm looking at the purpose statement. Yep. So lines 12, 13, 14, where we talk about.
Yep.
The purpose of the policy. And we don't necessarily address in guidelines any specific, at least that I'm seeing in the guidelines, we're not necessarily providing specific guidance on the implementation of how we would recognize an experience that is coming from a, you know, not a traditional school.
Right. I think it is covered by 620.1 within the guidelines. I don't think it talks about, so it looks like it's reviewed, there are, obviously, credits would have had to be granted, it's then reviewed by counselors. It doesn't then talk about, students and parents are notified in writing of the remaining graduation requirements and the transfer of credits occurs. What it doesn't do is say, if our counselors say that doesn't work or it doesn't apply, what do they do in that case? I'm not sure if that should be part of the policy or if you're suggesting that should be something. If so, we can certainly examine.
I, I felt, I felt that it was a piece that would, I thought there would be benefit to policy there of, of having some mechanism for reconsideration.
I feel like it would fit in the administrative guidelines more than in the policy itself, potentially.
Yeah. I would certainly be perfectly fine with that.
Okay. So if that's the case, why don't we review the policy, see if people want to move the policy? We hold on the guideline and we examine MSBA guidelines and work to look at what that would look like for an appeal process if our counselors don't pass credits that would be transferred in.
So is anyone willing to move the, the policy 620?
I will move policy 620.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Ms. Brackey, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and policy 620, credit for learning, passes, and we will bring back 620.1 administrative guidelines at the next meeting.
All right. So bringing us to policy 901, community education, obviously being renewed because it's important for us to acknowledge that we have to have our own Richfield policy and that this policy is now not guiding the Richfield Bloomington partnership, but the Richfield Community Education Program. And so similarly, there were some pieces that weren't fully in there, and those are now gone, as we talked about at our past meeting. Are there any questions about 901?
No questions about 901, just, I, I think I mentioned this last time, too, but how we can actually promote the Community Education Advisory Council and advertise it as a place where we are really looking for community members to get involved as we start this within Richfield for the first time.
So Carol McNamara in Commerce and Community Ed has begun that work. We've, we've talked about how do we make sure? And we are going to, I will go back to her again to reiterate, to make sure that we're getting a large and representative group within to our advisory council, and we're using effective avenues to advertise that piece.
Thank you.
And I know she's begun that work through the Enrollment Center. The Welcome Center actually opened today, and so we're really working with our new families to get them engaged in our students and in our classrooms and in our community as quickly as we can.
I would be comfortable moving policy 901 as presented.
I'll second.
I think we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and policy 901 passes. So we will move on to policy 203, organization of the Board of Education.
Okay. So just a couple of responses to questions we had. In the intro, it talks about six voting members of our board, lines 15 and 16, just a reminder about a quorum. The act of a majority of quorum is an act of the board. Says a majority consists of four present voting members. So one of the.
Looking at me because I brought it up.
Yes. One of the questions pointed out would be if we only have five folk present, a majority would actually count as three voting members. And so generally, right, three of five, if Mr. Paulus wasn't able to be here this evening, there would be five members, and three votes would actually constitute a majority at that time. So the question then becomes, well, and we're not passing that today because you're going to see the change, and the change is contingent on a follow-up policy we'll be looking at in new business. And so we'll be looking at, with the six members, a majority consists of four present voting members, should there be fewer than, than six members present, a majority would consist of more than half of the members present for voting?
It's not a big deal. I just think it's funny it's written in here when it may not be accurate in all meetings.
The majority is, I think, strangely, if I remember some training, if we have a quorum, say there's five of us, and two of us vote yes, and the other three abstain, the abstainers are, abstentions are, vote with the majority officially, and I think the motion would pass. I might be wrong on that, but anyway. I don't think we want to clarify a majority consists of four present voting members because we could, four present voting members could be the entirety of who's here.
No, I was gonna be actually just taking that out.
That line should be out.
Yeah.
Eliminated.
Yeah. Not going further down the rabbit hole of defining.
Agreed.
All right. So we will take that language out. The other complexity, as I followed up on board member Brackey's question, is there's actually times where four members don't count and we need all six members. When we act on Mr. Ashmead this evening, we actually need all of the members of the board to act on that. And so there's times where six voting members, and even a unanimous decision is required for certain components. So we'll look at that. The other area within the language, if you look down in section, I believe it's four or five, section five, in regard to delegations and requests. So one of the conversations we've had was around public comment. The previous language in there did not spell out all the components in relation to a board policy that many school districts have, and it's also in MSBA policy. It's through MSBA, it's policy 206. And the board asked to look at this particular policy, change our overall policy 203. And to do so, so we won't act on that tonight, we would actually have to enact at the same time board policy 206, which would be around public comment. And that is later on in the agenda. And so what we would suggest when we do that is, I mean, delegations and requests by groups and individuals to the board, it should say, please refer to board policy 206, public participation in school board meetings. And then the process is then defined in board policy 206, and that's what many districts have. And there is a pretty in-depth, significant, actually five-page rather than one paragraph, two-sentence policy in regard to that, that's actually outlined, that we'll discuss in a little bit.
Okay. So we are not.
We are not actually voting on 203, so we have a change. And then also, when we are prepared, and we'll obviously have a couple of reads of 206, so 203 will kind of be standing on our agenda but not passed over the next couple of meetings until we're ready to pass 206, which is public participation in school board meetings.
So we will move on to new business. And in light of the time and the fact that we have to have six voting members on item C, the authorization for board members to substitute and hold a casual temporary basis, I'd like to just move that up as the next item so that we are sure we get that done before one of our members has to leave. So we will move on to new business, C, authorization for board members to substitute on a casual or temporary basis.
So just as a reminder, board member Ashmead, he actually works as a part-time bus driver for our organization. Maximum amount that can be earned in one fiscal year by a board member, according to Minnesota State statute, is $8,000. Majority of the board member must approve, and so we all must actually vote on, on this particular opportunity for Mr. Ashmead, and all board members must be present. And so at this time, I push this forward to provide Mr. Ashmead the opportunity to drive bus as he so enjoys.
Thank you.
I move the authorization.
I'll second.
Anyway, we have a motion by Ms. Brackey, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Thank you, people.
Thank you for driving our students.
And our kids thank you for the field trips that you'll participate in through your driving.
Okay. So we will move back to new board policy 206, public participation in school board meetings.
All right. So at the board's request, we have gone and sought out MSBA policy 206. This would address participation in school board meetings, complaints about person and data privacy considerations. It would replace section five, delegations and requests. What you're seeing tonight in front of you is the model policy 206 from the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. And so as we do with each of our policies, as we write them and review them, we review MSBA and state-based policy. We examine those, we refine them, and we make them a Richfield-based policy. And so at this time, it would be a good time for that first read of our policy for the Richfield Board and to give feedback to help guide our administrative team in reviewing and revising the public comment, participation in school board meeting conversation about our policies.
Can I get two minutes of your time?
Actually, we are in the middle of our meeting, so actually, we can't, I can't have you interrupt the meeting. I'm sorry.
Two minutes of your time, I am not.
I'm sorry, I can't. There's a policy and you have to follow it.
There's a policy that we have been following, and we have not had the time.
Nobody requested to speak at tonight's meeting.
It was very confusing on the website. We came here for the seven o'clock of the city council. We thought it was going to be a joint meeting, and we emailed the city council, they allowed us to see that they're meeting. But then we came here and we realized that it was separate. I just think two minutes.
I would prefer that we stick to our policy, and if we start to make exceptions, then we'll end up being expected to continue to make exceptions like that. I feel that we need to stick to our policy, and we would be happy to have you to speak at our next meeting. So if you could just.
The reason why we need two minutes is because on the website for this Richfield school board schedule, it says the joint meeting of the city council and the school board is happening at 7:00 p.m. And so we showed up at 7:00 p.m., expecting there to be a joint meeting of the city council and the school board, but that's not happening.
No, that.
We requested time at that meeting, and your website said that you would be there. So we requested time to talk to you, but the website was having correct information, so you weren't able to talk to me.
So we had, our meeting was at 6:00, and during the study session, we are also only allowed to discuss items that are on the study session agenda. So even if that, even if you had been there at 6:00, it wouldn't have been possible to have a discussion with us at that point, anyway. Because it's not.
So just for a point of clarification, on our website, it does state, meeting will be held in the Bartholomew Room at the Richfield Municipal Building, just for, for us to have that language.
So you're not going to let us?
I, I need to stick to our policy right now and the way that we are doing things. I, I need to stick to our policy right now and the way that we are doing things. Otherwise, then the expectation will be that I can change the policy anytime that I want to. So we would be happy to have you at our next meeting. So I, I can get in touch with you after, after and put you on the agenda for the following meeting. If you follow the policy and make the request, you may. If you follow the policy and make the request, I would be happy to have you speak. So I can right now note that you're requesting and put you on the agenda for our August 21st meeting. I would be happy to do that.
See you.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions or discussions about the new board policy two oh six?
I think there are a number of things in the model policy that we need to adapt to our context to be clear about how to request public comment at our meetings and how our meetings run. So there are a number of pieces that I think will be helpful in terms of specifying this. I think one is to whom the request should go moving forward, so I think specifying that it should go to the board secretary. I think being clear that, I think as we discussed at our last meeting, that there will be public comment at one meeting a month. And so in here, saying what meeting that is, that it would be the one opposite where we have school presentations and obviously in the meetings where we meet once a month, that is when we will have public comment. So I think we just, we can take this model policy, but we need to actually make it clear and understandable to the Richfield community.
Okay.
We vote for school board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then the next thing we'll do is vote to remove you guys from these seats. Because I'm sitting here watching you guys and this is the community asking to speak. You don't get to dictate what and when people can speak to somebody who elected you.
Okay, we need to be able to finish our meeting.
Someone who elected you in office. So what we'll do is we'll vote people in place to replace you from these seats. And that's next. You guys are very intimidating. I've sat here for hours listening to you talk about just business as usual. But let's talk about the racism in, in, in school.
Okay, we, I'm gonna ask you to please, please stop disrupting our meeting or I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
You're disrespecting the people who put you in place. You're disrespecting the people who you asked to vote for you.
Sir, we are performing the exact duty the public asked of us to consider the official business of this board.
And your attitude is not needed because I put you in the seat. I put you in that seat. We put you in that seat.
Okay, we are going to continue or we're going to take a recess.
Make you a member of this board, we're gonna ask you to move.
Okay, we recess for five minutes. It is eight forty-seven and I call back to order this meeting of the Richfield Public School Board. We will move on with new business. Sorry, thirty-seven? Sorry, eight thirty-seven. And we will move on to finish our new business with board policy two oh six. If, I know we had already discussed that we wanted to refine it to be more specific to Richfield Public Schools. You brought up some specific things. We definitely will be revisiting this on the 21st. I think it's a good idea for us to kind of all look through it and think about how we can make it specific to Richfield Public Schools. I also think it would be, I think in the request process and kind of putting that in the hands of the board secretary, that will be a good move forward. But I also think it's important then after that, that everyone that makes that request and speaks at the, or is going to speak at a meeting, then also receives kind of the statutes and the rules and the things that we follow when we speak at a school board meeting so that everybody is aware before they come in what those real rules are and that we aren't allowed, and it is in the policy, that we aren't allowed to make preliminary allegations against any employees or students of the district. So that's something I would see added.
I want to clarify too, that to talk to us, I mean, public comments are important for transparency, but to reach out to us, we are pretty accessible, our information is, is public knowledge and we have been able, you know, available to reach out and talk to anybody who has approached us. But the public comment for sure will give that extra layer of transparency and I appreciate that the process will be clear, we, you know, someone to go to and more specific. So I hope that we will find, we will tune in that language in the next meeting, the way that is effective for us.
I think that, I think that sort of seconding Crystal's points and maybe expanding just a little bit, that implementation is, is going to be very important. And, you know, our, I think in many arenas, we've talked about being a user-friendly district. And so this is another piece where we want to make sure that there's, you know, that it's clear on the website and that there's a very clear process to work through in terms of working with the board secretary and getting the expectations that are clear. And I think, and as we've discussed the monthly open forum, I guess again, that would be a piece where there's clear boundary set around topics that would be, that would sort of not be allowed to be discussed. And then I guess the very last piece on my mind is just around, and I think this is also in the policy, is that, you know, the policy, the model policy from MSBA does talk about sort of good problem-solving techniques. You know, if there's a complaint against a specific teacher, that it's encouraged to work directly with that teacher first. And so I think that, you know, we need to continue to uplift a, you know, an effective mechanism for problem-solving.
So in that feedback that goes to someone that makes the request, we could also kind of include that education about the chain of command and how you work your way, you know, through those problem-solving steps.
Is there any other suggestions in regard to language to tighten up the policy to bring it back for a second read on the 21st?
So we will move on to bond and operating referendum ballot language.
All right, so we obviously have two pieces of ballot language in front of us. We already had some feedback given. Just as a reminder, one of the things we will need to do on August 21st is to call a special election and approve a final ballot. That'll include obviously the school board election, that will include the referendum election, should it be passed. So the two drafts of ballot language are in front of you. The first is the operating. Are there any questions about the operating ballot language?
Is it not possible to include in the ballot language what the operating dollars would go for? Because it is, I said earlier, I think this is very clear. I do think it's very clear, but it's interesting to compare it to the second question where it goes into so much detail about how the dollars will be used. And here, it's just, this is an increase. So I didn't know if that was intentional or not.
This is standard language-
Yeah.
-that is recommended. It's a lot more, when you have operating referendum, it goes into a general tool that is used for everything. So with capital referendum, there's specific funds and state plans and how that can be used. Our people, it's a simple report that's for. So the language with the details is required under statute. The language that is just what the operating referendum is, is what you use in your state across the state and is hopefully is recommended by our attorney.
I also think-
We provided, historically, we provided information about how it's going to be used.
Right. Just not on the ballot.
The ballot, the stipulations are, has to be listed for the bond referendums because it is targeted for those specific purposes and that's why it's identified in this.
I think the CQC will be doing a lot of work to get, you know, that clear information out.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, we do have voters that, that come and vote and might not have been fully, you know, attuned to all of the materials and sun-current articles and all of the things that are out there. So I didn't know if it would be possible to say, you know, an operating referendum is used for student programming and, you know, district financial strength, you know? And if, if that could be seen as potentially trying to like weight it a little bit too much, I, I get why that would be a concern.
But technically, the, the operating levy, that the funds can be used for literally anything.
Anything, right.
And so, that's, it could be used for-
Right.
Yeah.
Student programming and it could be used for financial strength and it could be used for additional staff to manage class size, et cetera. But it doesn't have to be used for any of those things, whereas the, I think the-
And I think as we've, as we've even discussed-
I'm sorry, Tim.
As we even discussed at our last meeting, that any commitments that we're making right now in terms of how we intend to try to use these funds, really are commitments that future boards will need, will need to be paying attention to.
Yep.
Yeah, because as Tim said, it's, it's at that annual discretion, so.
I also think I'll be hesitant since the money can be used for anything, to say something specific and then do something that's different even though it's, we allow and then we can be construed as, we are not using the funds as they were intended to be.
If we put it in the ballot language, we would be, we might even be constrained on the purpose of it, so.
Exactly.
Totally makes sense.
And since it's theoretically possible, we don't spend every dollar, like if, if we earmark it for a specific thing in the sense that it could be construed as assigned funds, maybe, I don't know, but whereas they, they would have to be used for the purpose. You know, if we tell the voters we're gonna use it for X, we really should use it for X. And so I think general funds is really just-
Yeah.
So given that the question is, do we want to move on the operating referendum or do we want to have both of those ballot languages back on the 21st?
Unless there is a reason to move them together, I'm comfortable moving the resolution on the operating referendum language.
Mr. Holdy, is that okay? I see you standing up. Is there-
I was just gonna say, I mean, depending where the board is at, I think there's the option, what is most helpful because the bond referendum has already gone to review time. So what's most important to us is that we have the dollar amounts that are affirmed for tonight. And if there's anything specifically within that bond referendum that the board is opposed to or anything that should be included that's added, we need that feedback so we can address it. After tomorrow, it is our last chance to submit any information for review comment. And so that's the most specific reason for having this on the agenda tonight. You will be seeing all of this language as well as the full resolution calling that special election on August 1st. So if there's anything we're going to do to support or affirm for both the dollar amounts to be included and or any changes to the ballot language that are recommended to be made, you could theoretically, we're submitting that for review by the attorney if you wanted to detail that out or we can take the feedback and have him fix some kinds of adjustments. So there isn't any need to have one moved and the other not moved as long as we have operation proposed, that the dollar amount is the correct amount moving forward in the special election. The items that's in there, I'm just-
So we, we don't necessarily need to move tonight, but a, some form of confirmation acknowledgement that moving two ballot questions, an operating referendum of four hundred and fifty dollars going from nine sixty-four sixty to fourteen fourteen sixty, and then a capital bond referendum of eighty-six million eight hundred thousand, with some wordsmithing of the words adding safety and security.
Just, just a clarification, did Peter move the question one or the language in question one or did he merely-
I asked the question.
I stated a willingness to move.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
But we have, don't have an official motion.
You know, I, looking at question one, some guy's gonna say, they're going from nine hundred and sixty dollars to fourteen hundred dollars, it's five hundred dollars. They're gonna say, you know, they're fifty percent increase. That concerns me. People are gonna read that and they're gonna not understand the significance of it.
Yeah, this is, right, and this is always, this is always a challenge with the ballot language and, and where the critical piece is, is education of the public in terms of translating what these numbers mean to the average taxpayer. So I think you're absolutely right, John, that, I mean, and really with that eighty-six million, again, talk about shock value, right?
Yeah, eighty-six million, yeah.
But it's incumbent then upon the district and our CQC partners to educate the public about what, what this, you know, A, what it means to the average taxpayer, B, what we intend to do with the increased revenue, so.
And then also including the comparison of where other districts sit and why, you know, the need for that is happening.
Yeah, so that's a whole nother piece. I think with the ballot language, we are somewhat constrained.
Okay, can someone bring it back and ask the question? If that's been done, are there other options? I would caution against any too specific business. Mr. Paulus has talked about the future boards that may be faced with different circumstances as far as what's required in this is a ten-year bond referendum, so it's hard to predict five, ten years out exactly what the situation is for this question.
Can you say something like, we would like to propose a seven dollar, no, you can't do that.
As the dollar amounts, the notice of special election that goes out to all taxpayers in the community identifies different house value levels and commercial property levels and what the impact of each one of these components is on their homes so that mainly goes out and has that information. It just can't be on the ballot that way, is my understanding. It's very specific how it needs to be said and what needs to be stated.
Right. And frankly, you can understand that-
Yeah.
-from the perspective of where the calculation starts is with the per pupil funding. Or where the calculation starts on the, on the capital question is with the size of the bond that you're selling. And then all the variables downstream are gonna cause, you know, the fact that none of these numbers are gonna look the same.
It's gonna turn a lot around.
Yeah, for the average taxpayer. So I think, I think we, I mean, I, from that perspective, that's why I, I support the, the dollar values as, as presented, recognizing that a lot of education of the public is still to be done.
So, so what I'm hearing from you, Craig, is that we could, we, we have an option to move both, to move, to move both ballot, to move the numbers forward from these ballots in terms of certifying that the numbers are correct. And that then there would be an opportunity for tweaking of language before we approve the final ballot language in two minutes.
I can see that as listed in the second, I will, with consideration for increasing or just one of the safety component of it, looking at how some of the different spaces are combined in the different movement section of that paragraph, I think it was, so looking at how that was identified and looking to see if we can make that second paragraph reaper. I think there's one of the other comments that was provided earlier in that discussion and I don't know if that's still, I guess, one of that second.
And do you see va, do you see value, I mean, I guess I myself, I'm seeing some value in getting something, something voted on this evening to move forward with the dollar values, the dollar amounts, and then we're not sort of backed up against the wall at our next meeting?
Can I ask a follow-up? The, we're approving the ballot language, but it will be included in the resolution of special election next time, so if we approve it, we still have to approve it again at the next one.
So you'll still approve it the second time, the official language, it's a, I've especially been making changes to it. We were wanting just to be able to move forward with affirmation of these are the dollar amounts, making sure that the board is clear with support of what those amounts were, so that if we need to make any changes, that we can be able to do that for the review of having tomorrow. Otherwise, if the items listed in that second item were confirmed, then there's sufficient to that. It's just a way of taking some action so that other members of the community who are interested in having that official determination starting the report, be able to do that. It's a totally proven word as well.
So with that clarification, I, again, I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve the ballot, the, certify the values, the number values as presented with the expectation that there will be some modification to the specific ballot language.
And Peter, can I say for clarity, you're saying on the, you're, you're affirming the numbers, so the nine sixty-four sixty, fourteen fourteen sixty-
Correct, correct.
And the eighty-six million eight hundred?
Correct.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Tensing. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brackey. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Do we need a resolution?
Well, are we, are we actually?
It's not a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. So we will move on to advanced planning and the legislative update.
All right, so we have an ESSA draft, you'll see in your board packet, at the MDE Back to School Conference. We had a lot of conversation around it. I reviewed it and anticipated significant changes, but I'm gonna have to lean on Board Member Brackey, who I know participated in one of the technical committees. I look at this, and I'm not seeing a whole lot that is, oh, so did Dr. Clarkson. You know, I couldn't even through the presentation or reading through, see a whole lot different. You know, there's a look at accountability and achievement, there are not necessarily report cards coming out from the state, we're really looking at the focus on the supports that are provided to our students. The states will continue to provide support through these Centers for Excellence for, for schools that aren't performing, and we're really, frankly, asked to do the work that we're really kind of doing in Richfield, which is looking at our data, looking at our students, looking by demographic and by individual students of who's not succeeding, and making sure that we have plans in place for all of our students.
You are literally looking at me.
Because now, having read two really large documents and seeing an hour and a half presentation, I, you know, there's not a huge amount changed, new, or significantly different that I can see, and I'm having one of those awkward, am I missing something moments.
I think there, there are a couple of things, so I'll highlight the ones that I think could potentially have the biggest effect for us as a district. One, and I can't go into the, the methodology of this, because I don't have it in my head fully, but prior to this, I think student groups were counted based on proportion. So if you had a very small proportion of American Indian students, for example, they were weighted relatively light in terms of how your school is seen as performance. In this plan, student groups are actually going to be weighted more evenly. So if you're a school that's doing very well educating one group of students, but actually doing really poorly educating much smaller groups of students, you could kind of fly under the radar a bit, and that is going to be more challenging to do in this particular.
So there'll be a set weighting by ethnicity or demographic group?
Yes.
Okay.
I think another thing is the way in which schools get identified for that additional support from the Regional Centers of Excellence. It's being described as a funnel. I don't know if you saw it in this PDF that was included in our packet, but there's basically an order of operations that they'll use to determine who that bottom five percent of Title I schools are. So, you know, I think that, that is relevant. But yeah, I, I think, a place I still have questions is, what does this mean for accountability purposes in terms of some of these really technical things that the Department of Education will be looking at, versus what does it mean for public information? And the information that is going to be readily available and hopefully understandable for families and communities? Because I think that's where we have a real problem right now, is we have all of this stuff that just doesn't make intuitive sense to people who don't get into these nitty-gritty details on a daily basis, which frankly is the vast majority of us. There are a couple of opportunities, if, if anybody wants to know much more about this. So Commissioner Casellius is doing a regional meeting on Minnesota's proposed plan in St. Paul. It's next Tuesday, the fifteenth, from six to seven-thirty PM at the Wilder Foundation, and you can sign up on the Department of Education's website if that is of interest. And then at the same time that these regional meetings are happening, the plan, the full plan, which is many, many, many pages, is posted for public comment right now. And so if you want to provide public comment to the Department of Education, for them to look at before they revise and ultimately submit to the Federal Department of Education, you have until August thirty-first to do that public comment. It is an online survey on the Department of Education website, so if you just Google Minnesota Department of Education, ESSA, public comment, it'll get you to the link where you can actually do that and see the full plan.
And I believe we all got emails from MSBA with a link to sign up for the Thursday.
The regional meeting?
Event also, yes.
Great.
We'll move on to information and questions from the board.
Couple of components to touch. Just a reminder, welcome back for our new teachers, August twenty-second, eight o'clock. So board members, or at least one representative, coming to welcome our new teachers and our new staff to the district. It's a great opportunity. And then we welcome all staff back on the twenty-ninth. The information in your board pack is actually slightly off. The breakfast for our staff begins at eight to eight-thirty, and then our program will be eight-thirty to ten-thirty. And so eight to eight-thirty, not seven-thirty, so it begins at eight with breakfast. And the all-staff welcome assembly, where our whole staff will be gathered together, is eight-thirty to ten-thirty on the twenty-ninth.
What was the email about?
Lunch in at one to one-thirty. You.
For me?
Yeah.
It's about a breakfast at the new teacher, new teacher welcome?
But it's, it's really a lunchtime, even though it's called breakfast. It said one to one-thirty.
It said seven-thirty. I'm sorry, John, I'll take a look and see what's going on, but I believe it wasn't breakfast.
I definitely know of the welcome breakfast at eight to eight-thirty, so.
When is this?
We'll ask at the all-staff.
New teacher on the twenty-second, and then all staff on the twenty-ninth.
I think it was the new teacher at one.
Yeah, it says eight to eight-thirty. My invitation says eight to eight-thirty.
Mine does also.
I would also add that the MSBA summer seminar was yesterday, and then there's other board training going on today and into this week. And Crystal and I attended on Sunday night an early bird event, which was called Culturally Responsive Leadership, and it was a really great experience. We're like seventy people there on a Sunday night before the event, and it was, it was really interesting and really good speakers. And anytime you have an opportunity, you know, to participate in MSBA training, I think it's just a really a worthwhile event if you can do it.
And I think we came away with some ideas and some things to think about in terms of actually implementing equity in some very concrete ways that I think we're both excited to talk more about.
Yeah. And then yesterday I went to one talk on referendum work, one on boards' self-evaluation. Their, MSBA is building a new tool to kind of help boards do their self-evaluation, and it looked really good. And then also a presentation on equity dashboard, so it's kind of a way to look at how the equity work in your district is going, and you set like a list of items and goals, and then there's data that you can put in, and then you can set it up to, to tell you whether, you know, it's going well, so it's green light, it's, or it's colored yellow, which means it needs work, or it's red, which is an area of concern. So it's kind of a way to be able to really look at all of the equity work we're doing and see how things are going. So it was great.
I have a couple of things to share. One is I got to volunteer a couple of weeks back for just a wonderful annual benefit for Woodlake Nature Center, which was, I got to be a course marshal for the Urban Wildland Half Marathon, but the most fun part was watching fellow board member Tim Polis at the head of the pack. You were, you were really far up there, and I was at like the nine-mile mark.
Barely holding it together.
You hit it well.
I don't, you know, it's sad, someone told me you were out there, and I, I missed you.
You didn't realize that was me yelling, Tim? That, well, now, now you know.
Thank you.
The, we, we talked in our study session about the comprehensive plan, and I'm the school board representative on the Comprehensive Planning Committee for the city, and there is an open house here at the municipal center on August seventeenth from three to seven, if anybody is interested in getting an update from city staff about the comprehensive planning process and how things are going, so I wanted to make sure to share that. And then lastly, obviously, this weekend in Bloomington, the Dar Al Farouk Islamic Center was victim to an explosive device, and the FBI is still working very hard to figure out why that happened and who was responsible for it. But when I, I went to a, a press conference that they had on Saturday that was just designed to really show support for that community, and as I was there, I was thinking, you know, we almost certainly have students and their families who spend a lot of time in that building. And so just, you know, wanted to extend support to them in what is obviously a deeply painful and difficult moment, and just thinking about the implications in particular for our young people as they come back to school. So I just wanted to make sure to, to sort of share that in this space as well.
Okay, so we will move on to future meeting dates. As we've already discussed, our next meeting is August twenty-first, seven PM, a regular board meeting back in our regular space, followed by the day after, or no, the first day of school, September fifth, Tuesday at seven PM, a regular school board meeting, followed by a closed session. And then the next meeting will be on September eighteenth, again, a regular seven PM board meeting in our regular space. So does anyone have any suggested future agenda items? No? Nothing? Okay. So.
I'll move to adjourn.
Excellent.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Polis, a second by Mr. Tensing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.